Okay, all right, call to order. We'll go ahead and start with the community and our city and community reports Honolulu Fire Department. Yeah, I forgot my mic. We'll go ahead and city and community reports Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, moving on Honolulu Police Department. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please continue.
Lieutenant Kiony Hong representing District Three, working on a pro city. Going over the stats for December compared to November twenty twenty four. More vehicle thefts, there were two in December, three in November. Burglaries, there are seven compared to six. Thefts, there are twenty-two compared to twenty-five. And car break-ins, there were seventeen in December compared to nine. Most likely due to the holiday season and usually car break-ins uptick a little. Calls for service in this area was one thousand three hundred seventy-six calls in December compared to one thousand three hundred eighty-four calls in November. The safety tip of the month is when using your vehicle remote to lock your vehicle. Be sure that the the doors are secured before leaving. So some of the car break-ins were unlocked vehicles, which could have been maybe an error on the owner's part for getting to lock it properly. Just one case I want to highlight. On December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at about nine in the morning. A male in the Salt Lake area reported that his motorcycle was stolen from his parking lot complex. Reported it to police as being a yellow motorcycle. Later that day at about two thirty P M, an officer actively patrolling near Pearl Ridge saw a black spray painted motorcycle driving around with a black spray painted license plate. The officer followed that motorcycle and was able to initiate a traffic stop. Later, the female driver was detained and it was found that that was the stolen motorcycle from earlier in the day. The female was arrested for operating a stolen vehicle as well as she had a substantial amount of illicit drugs. Most likely methamphetamine on her person. If there's any questions, I'm able to answer it at this time.
Okay, board members, any questions for HPD? Jane?
Mike? I just want to let you know that vehicles playing very, very loud music continues to be a problem along the Wauhala Road. Especially the the area between Pearl Ridge Elementary all the way down to Palimomi Hospital. It affects a great number of people because it's very high density there. So if you could do something about that disruptive problem, I'd appreciate it.
Is there a specific time of day or did you pinpoint a specific vehicle?
Um, not a specific vehicle. It's I it's at least a dozen times per day. It is mostly in once it's dark, but it happens during the day as well. And it happens all hours from early evening until very, very late.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for HPD? Sir, I got I got two things. There was a double assault at Makalapa Community Center. And I was wondering if you could brief us on that situation?
Do you know the date was that the murder you're talking about?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that one is domestic violence related. The male suspect appears to have stabbed the female victim multiple times, causing her death. Another bystander who was there to try to break up the incident also got stabbed. And the next day, the Crime Reduction Unit officers were able to locate that male and place him under arrest.
So as somebody who lives close to that area, I know that when I drive by, there's a large group of folks that usually hang out there with their cars and they're drinking and smoking and everything else. Is HPD going to be enforcing some kind of curfew on that location or so that? Because it was my understanding that there was this group of people and that they were drinking and that this resulted from something like that.
Yeah, if you do. Free to call, but that was like I mentioned, domestic violence related, so and the perpetrator was arrested.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry, sorry, you'll have your turn, sir, for a second. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is between on Friday and Saturday nights mainly between midnight and one o'clock. Sometimes eleven to one o'clock, there's still the street racing occurring on H one freeway, west and eastbound.
Yeah, so we got another message from Senator Elafante's office regarding that. And then we are gonna, of course, do our best to enforce that with, of course, the nine-one-one calls, the clubs that are in our district. We do have officers that try to go on the freeway and enforce it and usually takes a few officers. But I heard about the state trying to have some kind of re-reinforcement team as well. So maybe that could help if that does come into effect. I don't know if you heard about that as well.
Yeah, I didn't hear about that, but okay, as long as you guys are tracking it and trying to resolve the issue, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, community members, sir. You want to go up to a mic, sir? Right there, right there in front of you, sir.
This is a habitual problem that's been going on for fifteen plus years. And we are not getting any kind of satisfaction from the police. This is the parking lot for the Makalapa Community Center. The people that live directly across the street from that have bedrooms right on that parking lot. They are not able to use their bedrooms. They are not able to sleep in their bedrooms. We need help. We need intervention. We call, the police don't come. This has been going on for, like I say, over fifteen years. We need help. We need you to do something, not just say you're gonna look into it, not say that, oh, we're working on it. We need action now because every day that you're not doing something, those people are not able to sleep. They pay rent. They should have the right to sleep in their bedrooms. These are citizens of this area. They should have the ability to sleep in their beds at night. They are not able to do that because of the harassment that goes on from that parking lot. The loud noise, the drinking, it's all illegal activity. Why does the police continue to allow this to happen? The rumor is in the community is that you're afraid. That these are gang related people that you don't want to mess with because you're afraid of your own safety. I don't know if that's true or not, like I say, that's a gossip, but we need help. We need you to do something now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Tonight I'm working, so I guarantee you we're gonna go up there tonight.
But I think I think, you know, the homeowner here has a concern. I have a concern because I do drive by it all the time. I see what's going on. Who owns that community center, Brandon? Do you know who owns that community center? Is that a city or state thing? Okay, you know, okay.
Maybe Google it.
All right, I'll ask Councilmember Cordura about that. Okay, yeah, because I think one of the probably one of the issues is the same situation we dealt with with Halava Park, where there wasn't posted signs in terms of the hours of operation or hours that parking lot could be used. And so it was real hard for you folks to be able to enforce something that wasn't like posted for the, you know, public. So we'll have to we'll have to reach out to that community center and see if we can get some signage posted and then have you guys enforce it, right? So so moving forward, well, that's I'll take that action to reach out to that community center, okay?
For sure.
Thank you. Okay, community members, any other questions for HPD? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, sir, for your report, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, Board of Water Supply.
All right, good evening, I'm Stephen Norstrom with the Board of Water Supply. And this is our monthly report for the I A A Neighborhood Board District for January. We had two main breaks in December. We had one on twelve, December fifteenth. It was an eight inch main break at ninety-eight dash one oh four Keahale Street. And then we had one on New Year's Eve on twelve thirty-one. It was an eight inch. It was the location was ninety-nine dash one oh five Mika Lemi Street over there in I A A right by Pearl Ridge. And our general announcement tonight is the Board of Water Supply has something called the Water Wisdom Program, which offers customers the ability to conserve water and detect leaks. And through this program, you can learn how to perform a home water audit, which will you can ensure, excuse me, your fixtures and appliances meet low flow standards, identify leaks that waste water. If you would like to pick up your own little water audit bag, you can come down to the Board of Water Supply's Public Service Building. We have those to offer and you can check our website out. Board of Watersupply dot com slash water wisdom for a cool little water audit video to show you how you can conduct that audit. Excuse me, and I put some calendars over here too as well. We have our twenty twenty-five water conservation calendars available for you to take home tonight. And that is the announcement.
Awesome, thank you. You're welcome. Board members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? I noticed that you guys are saying that you're that you're drilling a new well at Site A. Okay, you know how much the cost of that is?
I do not, I can find out that.
Would you please?
Sure, of course.
I just want to see if it aligns with the cost that you previously gave.
Okay, this is Site A, you said?
Yeah, monitoring well at Site A, job twenty-four dash zero zero two.
Sure, okay, yeah, definitely we'll follow up, important next month for you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, community members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Okay, nothing heard, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Hawaiian Electric. I'm sure we're gonna have some questions for these guys. They're not online? Yeah, I can imagine why they're not online. Okay, moving on. Stadium Authority.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair, Board, Community Members, Happy New Year from Aloha Stadium. I'm going to do a quick update just on the stadium before I get into any kind of NACED updates. So this past Saturday, we did partner with the Department of Law Enforcement to have their public surrender of illegal fireworks. That was held in Lower Halavalot on Saturday, January eleventh from nine to three. I do not have a full count of how many pounds they collected, but I know it was several hundred. They were very pleased with the turnout, so we're happy that we could be able to host that moving forward. Also for January, just quick updates with our swap meet. We do have now weekly Ho'opu Pahale Entertainment. That's different types of groups that come out and they play usually from eleven to one on Wednesday, Saturday and Sunday. So all that information can be found on the website. Moving forward for February, it is kind of a jam packed month. This will be the last month that we really host a lot of other events other than swap meet. So we have two concerts coming up. We have one on Friday, February seventh, and also Saturday, February eighth. The first one on Friday is with TMR Events and it's Taiga. So he is a mainland rapper that will be coming here again, doors open at four thirty. We cut at ten o'clock. And then Saturday, February eighth, again, it is TMR Events, Upper Halavalot. And this one is it's a combination of local reggae and mainland reggae called Revolution. So again, we will be using the same footprint that we have in the past with TMR. And we do monitor all of the sound levels and we make sure that the control is there. Following that, we do have Great Aloha Run, which is held on President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth. So they will be ending at the stadium. And then just some smaller events, we have February twentieth, you'll see the Girl Scouts, so get ready for some Girl Scout cookies. They will be picking up all of their cookies in our Lower Halavalot that day. And then we do have AMR driver training in Lower Halavalot, just so you're aware, on February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And then in regards to NACED, I apologize, Chris could not be here, she's out of town. So we did have the pleasure of attending the A A Community Association Holiday Fair this past December. So they got to meet a lot of the community and we did some giveaways and we had some fun activities for the kids. So we're really excited to be a part of that. We do continue with our e-newsletter that has all of the information in regards to the project that you can. If you haven't followed us, you can go on the nasid.hawaii dot com site or also the Aloha Stadium site as well for all of that information. And then, I believe, Stanford Carr. Oh, hello, Stanford, how are you? He snuck up on me. So I actually want to take this opportunity to invite Stanford Carr. He's going to be talking for a few minutes and again, he will turn everything over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to have a moment to just explain to you what what we're doing right now, what's ongoing. Joshua Strickler from Ameresco, one of our partners, part of Aloha Halava District Partners. For last, well, last month, you may have seen in the papers as well as on the news, the December nineteenth Board Meeting at the Stadium Authority where we presented some of the and shared the renderings and our plans and addressed questions from the board members with respect to our proposed plans for the redevelopment of Aloha Stadium District. Right now, our focus is on the next few weeks negotiating the master development agreement, the master development, the operating management agreement for the new stadium, as well as the forms of the ground lease and reciprocating easements. So a lot of a lot of legal work, the business terms of the development. Make sure that, you know, this is all financeable. It's a long term project. We see this as a twenty, twenty-five, could be thirty year project. I know it'll augment my existence, but what's important is that we set the integrity and the foundation of this new urban community that we envision for this area. So with that, Senator Elafonte, good to see you. We will be planning to set up a website. We will be back. I just wanted to come by this evening, introduce ourselves. We will be engaging with all of you in the community at the future meetings at the stadium. That your folks will be well informed as to how we're moving along and making progress throughout the development process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys want to talk about the community meetings that you're that are coming up?
So they're being scheduled right now?
Yeah, March third, I think, is one of them.
So we do have two that are coming up. So January twenty-seventh will be the first one.
Right.
That one will actually be with just head leaders like yourself and then the other districts and Stanford and his team. And then we will be doing one for the public, which is on February third. So this is going to be at six o'clock.
Hold on, February third?
February third.
Okay, February third is six o'clock, okay.
February third, six o'clock, yes. And it's both will be at the hospitality room at Aloha Stadium.
Okay, and how they get to that hospitality room is through the front, right, area?
Yes, so security will have the gate most likely open, but we should have ushers there as well. So you're going to enter through the Salt Lake Boulevard main gate and then you're kind of kind of circle around, park in the big parking lot. And then if you're familiar with the stadium, it is where the volcano statue is, where the box office is. And then we'll have security there as well and then we'll escort you in to the room.
Okay, great, thank you. So I got a couple of questions before we jump. Well, hold on, board members, you got any questions for Stadium Authority? I got one question. When are you guys anticipating breaking or doing teardown?
Actually working on demolition drawings right now. We met with Department of Planning and Permitting and their team about three weeks ago.
Okay.
And so we've got a whole team working on logistics and planning for demolition.
Okay, you have a targeted date, like quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, something like that? Because I think right now the projected was summertime, somewhere around the summertime, right? But that might have slipped.
The execution of closing contract closing date is set for June of this year.
Okay, okay.
But we've met with Department of Planning and Permitting is to understand the scope of what their expectations are in the demolition permit.
Okay.
We've also planned out the logistics. I mean, we have to import cranes.
Right.
There's different methodologies of the dismantling the stadium with chairs as well as with explosives. So so those are approaches are being vetted right now with the consultants.
Okay. So one other question I had was when this teardown occurs, what's going to be, what's going to happen? Where's it, I should say, where's the swap meet going to relocate to?
Swap meet is being relocated. We've got a phased relocation because the swap meet is going to continue to operate.
Is it going to go in the lower parking lot or where's it?
It'll be on the lower.
Hold on, hold on, she's she's got this, I think, Stanford.
So we're going to relocate probably, we're looking at June because we will be doing some resurfacing to the actual Upper Halavalot now. So we are looking at probably the earliest that will move is early June. We're trying to push for the end of May, but that again depends on all the work that we do for that. But then as Stanford said, yes, we are going to relocate them and we're going to keep them operational. We have really exciting things that we're doing. We're adding retail units. We're moving the big tent down there, we'll have entertainment, so.
Are you going to move them to the lower parking lot or where are you?
The public parking will be in the lower, so closer to the two shopping centers. And then that upper place will be where are those? So we are still anticipating the way we have the layout doing. We do have all of the premium on one section and then we do have kind of our secondhand swap meet on the other section. So we're kind of dividing it and then the middle will be our retail units there.
Okay, and this will happen in the June timeframe?
We're looking at June right now, yes.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Anything else, folks? Okay, hold on just for a second. Hold on, Paul, just for a second. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your openness to the community and concept that you have. And my wish is that you are able to resist undue influence from special interests, from government and from individuals in the public and stick to the plan that benefits our area the most.
Will do, thank you.
Here, here, okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, public, anything for the Stadium Authority? Nothing online, Curtis? Okay, great, okay, thank you, sir, and thank you for your brief. Okay, moving on. So next up is O triple C, favorite subject.
Hello. Can you folks hear? I'm online, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can, please go.
Oh, fantastic, thank you Chair Wood, members of the Board and A A Community Members. Hello, my name is Jason DiMarco and I am the Design Team's Project Manager from AHL. Our usual representatives, Patina Maynard and Chris Gadasch, could not be with us today as they are at the American Corrections Association Conference in Orlando, Florida, where our project was presented over the weekend. And we have been meeting with interested industry partners at the Trade Floor booth set up for the project. And our team looks forward to sharing more information and some photos of this conference with you all at your next board meeting. So for today, we would like to follow up with you folks to some of your prior questions posed to us regarding the envisioned transitional center on the property. And here to speak on this important element of the project is Ms. Tessie Fernandez, Business Management Officer with DCR. And I'd like to turn the time over to Ms. Fernandez.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So Director Johnson and his deputy directors are unable to make it tonight. They are also at the ACA Conference in Orlando. However, they have prepared a response regarding concerns on the planned community transition center that will be built next to the new O triple C. So the O triple C New Jail and Transition Center, before we talk about whom we will house at the new O triple C Transition Center, it might be helpful to provide an overview of DCR, Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, and how we manage the various people in our care and custody. Determining a people's, a person's custody level is guided by our classification system and department policy, not unlike other correctional systems nationwide. Our five custody levels are maximum, close, medium, minimum, and community. The degree of physical control, direct supervision, and types of programs the offender will have access to shall be based upon operational and physical criteria. Our classification system provides an efficient and objective versus subjective system that is founded on the principles of fairness, objectivity, reliability, and measurability. Our goal is to place an offender in the least restrictive environment using varying degrees of security to promote successful rehabilitation and provide opportunities for reintegration back into the community. So let's start with whom we will not house in the transition center. We will not house sentence felons who have a custody level greater than minimum. Higher custody offenders will continue to be housed at the main O triple C jail or one of our three male prisons as deemed appropriate. So who we might house at the transition center? Community custody offenders who are considered low risk and have earned that level from a higher custody level by demonstrating consistent good decision making. People who have demonstrated the ability to follow rules and those who have made a conscious decision to change. They have attended recommended programming to help them make better choices and reduce their thinking errors and poor judgment. Parole and probation violators who have not committed new crimes will be placed there as well. Reassessed and if appropriate adjustments made their terms and conditions of release. Then re-released to continue supervision. People participating in the extended work furlough program who have an approved residence and have been living in the community but violated the terms and conditions of their contract but have not committed new crimes will also be placed there. Reassessed and if appropriate adjustments made their terms and conditions of release. Then re-released to continue supervision. Although the Laumaka Work Furlough Central will remain operational, the transition center may also serve as a second male work furlough site to increase the number of male offenders who qualify for work furlough as there is often a backup in the system. People who are eligible for work furlough and have a job in the community which allows them to earn money to pay their restitution, including monies owed to the victims of their crime. The goal is to save enough money in preparation for release so they can survive in the community without relying on the bad habits and criminal activity that brought them to DCR in the first place. The transition center will serve as a central hub of community inmate work lines for inmates whose classification level of minimum or community meets the work line participation guidelines. Additionally, short term programs will also be provided for all categories of offenders who qualify, including re-entry referral services. The transition center will have correctional officer presence and will provide for a safe and secure environment for our community. Although we remain in the development and planning stages of the new O triple C jail and transition center, we are aware of the community concerns surrounding safety and we intend to incorporate security and safety measures into the design. Even if the transition center is not surrounded by a physical fence, it doesn't mean the building will be absent security measures such as locking doors and movement passes for people approved to be in the community. We are also aware of community concern for people walking the streets when going to or returning from work. We are evaluating this concern and will plan for options to transport workers to the nearest bus stop. Some employers who hire work furlough inmates also provide transportation to and from work. Should there be any questions? In the information that I have read, I will note it and make sure a response is provided to the board in its next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a pretty, I think that's the first time we've actually heard something about how what they're going to, who's going to actually be residing in these transitional houses or housing area. I would be more interested in hearing and also hearing further details about the transportation, shuttle services, bus routes, these kind of things that will be available to those folks that are in that transitional housing area. Because I think one of the concerns that we've heard over and over again from. Because I think one of the concerns that we've heard over and over again from residents is that they don't still want these folks walking around on the streets, you know, and, and so, so, you know, trying to get from A to B. They'd rather have them get to someplace like a public transportation hub to be able to go to do their job, do whatever they can. So, okay, board members, any questions? Lawrence?
Are those people gonna be? Are those people gonna be monitored while they're being released?
Yeah, will they, will they be having like ankle bracelets or any kind of monitoring on them while they're in this transitional phase?
Um, I will, I will give that question to the corrections people, and we'll get back to you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions? I just, just let Bettina know, or whoever else is gonna be here next time, to start thinking about briefing us on your guys' plan. On, I want, I want to give you guys a solid 10 minutes of what the plan is in terms of, you know, managing these individuals in this transitional housing area. Okay?
Noted, Chair.
A great, great little brief there you, you provided us. A lot of information, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, community members, Claire.
Tessie, you talked about the O triple C transitional housing. Is that separate from the O triple C, or is that gonna be built at the same time? And is that the site at the, where the animal quarantine was? You're gonna have two separate buildings?
Correct. It's going to be built next to the new O triple C.
Right, so the transitional housing won't get built before the O triple C gets built, right?
It will be, for now, I really do not know how it's going to be built, which one comes first, but it is part of the planning that both buildings will be built at the site.
Okay, and then what is the projected funding of any of the building?
Um, that currently, right now, in the, in the session, we are only requesting for 30 million for the continued planning for the O triple C. And for the second year of the biennium, we have not asked for additional funding at the present time.
Okay, because in the past, hasn't Bettina shared with us that the timeline is probably not, I think, until 2035 to build? Anything?
I will have to check, Claire, you know, on the timeline that was provided earlier, but we will update you with those information.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, community members, any more questions for O triple C? Nothing online, Curtis? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your brief.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, moving on, Pearl Ridge Shopping Center.
Chair Wood, board members, aloha and happy new year. Regarding new stores, it's kind of customary at this, this time of year, early in the year, we don't have many store openings. Many of our lease negotiations will not come to fruition until later in the year, second quarter, third quarter. I do want to mention, though, the Planet Fitness lease has been signed. I think I have mentioned that. Permits are still pending, but making some progress there. And we're hopeful that those, that those permits will be released first quarter. Elson's Goldsmith did open on December 20th near our Straub building in Pearl Ridge East. They're a family-owned and operated jeweler specializing in repair and cleaning jewelry services. They also create their own jewelry rings and wedding bands. Some events, just highlight a few. The 73rd Cherry Blossom Festival Queen Contestants will be at Pearl Ridge Center on January the 25th from noon to 2:00 PM at our Maka Center Court. And an event that we've had previously is our Senior Lifestyle Fair where we have 20 exhibitors talking about health, health and wellness, nutrition, health insurance, healthy living, finances, home care, assisted living, and so on and so forth. This will be at our Maka Center Court on Saturday and Sunday, January 18th and 19th. We have renewed our, our Pearl Ridge Open Air Farmers Market for 2025, and they are, had the farmers market every Saturday morning from 8:00 AM to noon at our By Makai, street-level parking along Columbia Highway. A blood bank of Hawaii blood drive taking place on February 7th from noon to 6:00 at our Maka Parking Lot, part of the, part of the food court. And there's a link there to register. And finally, we also renewed our Village Market that occurs every Saturday evening in front of TJ Maxx on Saturdays. That's on Saturdays from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. So, a pretty brief report, but that's it. And please visit us at pearlridgeonline.com, and there's also a scan code there that gets us to our website.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for Pearl Ridge? Danny, how's the feral cat situation?
Same?
Yeah.
Okay.
I haven't, we haven't seen anyone feeding on that side, which we're doing.
Okay. And security? Okay, good. Okay. All right. Just a couple other questions from me to you. Status of the Chili's? You find a new tenant for that, or?
Not yet.
Okay, and Toys R Us, Little Toys R Us?
No.
Okay, and then, I've already mentioned to you about maybe making, looking at that Sears and maybe making
Yeah.
converting into housing?
Long-term, I think that, you know, the housing is a thing that we, we drive to always. We're, we're actually looking to maybe do a short-term use on the second level so that we could open up the mall level with the second level of Sears. There's some challenges with HVAC and utility costs and so forth, but we are.
Yeah, I was reading an article, you know, I can't remember where, but they were talking about a lot of mainland malls doing this, right? Revitalizing those mainland malls by making them housing at that point, you know, especially like the San Francisco area, right? So, might be a good idea.
Yeah, I've seen complete shopping center, regional malls turned into hospitals. I mean, it's just, it's the real estate that's, that's where the real value is, you know.
Okay, great. Thank you. Community members, any questions for Pearl Ridge Shopping? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, US Navy, DOD. And before we start with this brief, I'm just gonna let everybody know that it's, we're limited this to five minutes. Okay, we're not gonna have a situation like we had a few months ago. Go ahead.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
What, community, Victor Flit, Naval Facilities. January 1st. That horrible incident that happened in Halei Manu. Federal Fire Department assisted Honolulu fire and EMS with our advanced life support units and personnel. And that was very traumatizing. My nephew was the second or third unit in, and oh my God, our thoughts and prayers and aloha go out to all involved. Second, um, some of those badly burned patients needed additional care. So, we were asked to assist on January 4th. Six severely burned patients from that firework incident were airlifted from Hickam all the way to Arizona for treatment. And this was done by the 15th Air Wing with a huge aircraft set up specifically for emergency medevac, and they not only took the six patients, but about 30 medical personnel as well. So, might cut you on that. Dry Dock 5, everything going forward on schedule. And Hokulea, Hokulea will be at the Rainbow Bay Marina. And those of you who don't know where that, where that's at, it's close to the Arizona Memorial and Restaurant 604. It's in that area, Old Halava Land. And it's a week-long event. The Hokulea and crew will be meeting with the people and doing dockside tours of Hokulea. All are involved. It's off-base, so you don't need any pass or anything like that. Hope to see everybody there. That's all I have. Bring up Lydia now.
Thank you, Vic.
Part two of our three-part briefing. I'll keep mine short. We have the Hawaii, Hawaii, California Training and Testing Public Meeting at the Kehe Lagoon Weinberg, Weinberg Memorial Hall. We've put out several notices on this. It goes from 4:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night. There's a public meeting Thursday in Kauai on that, and then a virtual public meeting on January 22nd. If you need more specifics, please let me know, and I can send them to you, but information was in the report we sent earlier today. Secondly, we, I brought copies of the Weekly Mo'olelo. This, this week's features, looking at the legacy of President Carter. For those of you who don't know, he was actually here in the late 70s, and he gave a speech at Hickam and talked about energy and environment, so a lot of foresight even back then. Third, LoLima 2025, we've talked about the, what the Navy's doing as we build toward the 250th birthday. We have a lot of people interested in volunteer activities. We've documented more than 60 so far, just in the last couple of months. We know there are a lot more. So, be it blood drives, or we had folks help out with the Christmas parade here, et cetera. So, if you have an event that you know of, please let us know, and we'll let our volunteers know. And then lastly, we are starting up import tours of our mid-pack ships at Pearl Harbor, starting on Saturday, January 25th. We're gonna do one Saturday a month. If you have a group, it'd be 20 or less, please let me know. We'll start looking at scheduling those a few months out. And then Chris Tanahara is still working the monthly community white votes, and we will share information. That's all from me. I'll turn it over to Steph.
Good evening Chair Wood and community, board members in the community. So, just an update from Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. New operational updates, pressure washing of Tanks 7 and 8 began this month. The next closure open house for information will be March 12th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Kehe Lagoon Lost Battles Room, the one in the back. And then Navy Closure Task Force hosted the Board of Water Supply and Consultants for a tech meeting to discuss Navy Swarm tech memo. And we have that video up on our Navy Closure Task Force website under media, and then videos. And then I wanted to address that. Hopefully, we've answered all the community board questions that were sent, just given abbreviated. There are four questions. One was, where is Navy putting the water filters and halava? Short answer, the halava housing area to Larry's question, that was one of them. Where are the AQM stations and and why aren't they throughout the community ensure that no one is being harmed? There are nine stations that were approved by DOH according to meteorological input and through rigorous modeling of expected dispersion of, of the air while the tanks were being ventilated. So, that's how it was determined for the nine stations. And then, three and four, question three and four, is the Navy, why is the Navy reactivating halava shaft, and can we trust that it be safe to drink? And what is the timeline? There are procedures in place, but there is no current timeline because Department of Health is our regulator to make that decision. So, that's why there's no current timeline, and there are many things between now and then that could determine that timeline. So, it's not the Navy's decision for the timeline. It's for Department of Health as our regulator.
Do you have a timeline to give us the timeline?
They determine the timeline. We just, we, we gave them procedures in place. We shared planning with them, and they will take those plans, and they will create the timeline. So, if we have a timeline to give a timeline, then yes.
Can you ask a question when to expect it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
But I hope that covers all of your questions. I apologize for the delay, but if you do have more questions, welcome to answer them and bring those responses back to the board, too.
Board members, any questions? Larry?
As far as your timeline, to the Department of Health or says that you're clear to go, does that mean like this year we can open up a lava shaft?
I'm, I'm sorry, Kate.
You mentioned that.
If you're clear to go, would we, would we put that up?
No, you mentioned you waiting for Department of Health to give you a green light as far as opening the shaft. So, if they're to give you the green light, say, today, does that mean the shaft is gonna be open this year?
Oh, we would still have to work with them to plan that out. So, I mean, if they have a green light, we, we just don't say jump out high. I, I do believe there's a, we'd have to still work with them and work plans with them and coordinate with DOH on that timeline.
Okay, because the, well, the answer is not the answer because by what you're saying, it could be five years out, 10 years, 15 years out. And my concern was if another well should get contaminated. Say if the Navy took the lead and they opened up halava shaft because they put in filters, this and that, and they needed, say, five years to do that. If another shaft should get contaminated and the state follows the Navy's lead, puts in those filters, the public will know that within five years, we could have the well up and running again. But without that knowledge, say if another well got contaminated, it may create a situation on this island that we will need severe water rationing. That's why the question came up, like, as far as the timeline, because if you guys have no clue on the timeline, I would suggest you guys look into something like a desalinization plant, which is being done on the mainland. It's not that bad because our government's spending money like there's no tomorrow. The Desal Plan roughly gonna be, I'd say, 1.75 to 2 bill. So, if you guys looked into that as far as an option, at least that way you're gonna know in certain terms, when fresh water could be generated that could offset whatever's contaminated from the halava shaft. Because I think that's the critical thing, is if another EWS well goes down, we may run into a situation where they gotta have people start rationing water. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Lawrence. Uh, any other questions, comments from the board? I, I just want to give props to DOD and Board of Water Supply, by the way, for working together. Because I think in September, we were talking about how you guys didn't know the left hand was talking, you know, working with the right hand. And it seems like since that point, there's been a lot more, you know, that you guys have been working more together in terms of these monitoring of the wells and trying to actually do right to the public. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And then one other from our Director of Public Affairs. If you were to put us on the agenda for presentations, we can provide further operational updates that might answer your questions because we'll talk about all the operational updates we have for 2025 such as tank cleaning, pipeline removal. We can go to further detail. We're put on the schedule, if you, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I am. Board members, I mean, what do you guys consider as a reasonable presentation, you know, schedule for these folks? Every quarter, every, twice a year? I mean, throw out some ideas, you know, and then we can have them come in and do that. Every quarter? Quarter? Okay, yeah, so every, every, every quarter, just give us an update, presentation update.
Okay.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, community members, any questions for DOD or Navy? Okay, thank you. Nothing hurt. All right, moving on, Mayor's Office.
Evening Chair Wood, board members and community. I'm Haku Millis, Director for the Department of Design and Construction. A long report tonight, so I'll, I'll try to get through it quickly. A few highlights from Mayor's Newsletter. City lifeguards and firefighters brave massive waves to compete in the Yeti. The Steen County in Honolulu announces a new landfill site on Oahu. Mayor Blangierdy honors Councilmember Calvin Seay, who was retiring after nearly five decades of public service. The 40th Honolulu City Light Celebration wraps up as thousands enjoy the displays, and the city wins $2 million grant for affordable housing development in Ivalae. The January 25 edition of Mayor's Newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. Put that in the chat. The registration for 2025 through 27 neighborhood board elections is now open. Candidates can register online at the Neighborhood Commission Office's website, honolulu.gov/nco. Voter registration is available via paper form, also at honolulu.gov/nco, and questions can be directed at the NCO by phone at 808-768-3710, or through email at nco@honolulu.gov. Important dates, Friday, February 27. Important dates, Friday, February twenty first, candidate and voter filing deadline. April twenty fifth, voting begins and voting ends on May sixteenth. Who can be a candidate? Any resident, including military personnel, military family members and legal resident aliens must be at least eighteen years of age by Friday, February twenty first, twenty twenty five. Primary residents must reside within the neighborhood board boundary. Who can vote? Anyone can vote, including milit- military personnel, military family members and legal resident aliens must be at least eighteen years of age by Friday, February twenty first and voted in the last general election or register with the N C O to vote specifically for the neighborhood board elections. Next, city seeks Ocean Safety Commissioner candidates for twenty twenty five launch. The city is looking for exceptional individuals to join the Ocean Safety Commission with initial meetings forecasted for July twenty twenty five. In preparation for its launch, the city is seeking five qualified and passionate members of the public to serve as commissioners. With the Ocean Safety Commission, while they will not have direct operational or administrative authority over the Honolulu Ocean Safety Department, it is tasked with the following important duties. Appointing the Ocean Safety Chief, reviewing the annual budget prepared by the Ocean Safety Chief and making recommendations to the mayor and the council, reviewing the department's operations as deemed necessary for the purpose of recommending improvements to the Ocean Safety Chief, evaluating at least annually the performance of the Ocean Safety Chief and submitting a report to the evaluation on the evaluation to the mayor and the council, hearing complaints of citizens concerning the department or its personnel, and if deemed necessary, making recommendations to the Ocean Safety Chief on appropriate corrective actions. And last, submitting the annual report to the mayor and the council on its activities. Eligible requirements. Applicants must reside in the city and county of Honolulu, must be registered voters and demonstrate expertise in one or more of the following areas. Open water, lifesaving and public safety services, marine conservation and environmental science, community education and outreach, ocean water sports and recreation, risk management and injury prevention in a dynamic aquatic environment, emergency management and disaster preparedness, intimate knowledge of the city charter pertaining to H O S D, the Office of Ocean Safety Department, sorry. Interested candidates should submit their resume and cover letter by January thirty first, twenty twenty five to M D office at honolulu.gov. I'll put that email address in the chat. Some issues from last time. There was a concern of construction of a house on Ulinay Street. Member Suji raised concerns of a new construction of two of two single family homes with property not specified with the question, what is the legal authority for construction? D P P responded today that they need the specific address. There are currently seven issued permits for construction of new dwellings on Ulinay Street. Three unique projects for the construction of two dwellings on a single lot. There was a question, notice of violation for concrete gravel planter strips confronting properties. D P P responded that inspectors have been active in the area to address multiple public complaints about sidewalk conditions. During their investigation, D P P identified several properties with issues, including uplifts, damaged utility covers and unauthorized sidewalk encroachments. The presence of unauthorized concrete constitutes a violation of yeah, the revised ordinance of Honolulu, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash three point eight B two. Property owners are required to address these violations by either removing the encroachments or they may apply for a surface encroachment variance. If owners do not take corrective action or fail to comply, the case will be referred to the Department of Facilities Maintenance. D F M will then notify the homeowner with a letter detailing the estimated removal cost and the scheduled date for the work to be completed. For more information regarding surface encroachment variance can be found on the D P P website. That's a long link that I will put in chat. Storm drain overgrowth, Chair Wood reported that a storm drain overgrowth and requested an update to Honolulu three oh one I D four six four one six eight one. Maintenance of Halawa Stream behind nine nine dash two three nine Okekani Loop is scheduled for mid February. Yes. Broken street light pole, resident reported that there's a a light on pole thirteen dash four two three on a A Heights Drive that is not working per the P V E M chief, the building maintenance chief. Records show the light was repaired on November twenty seventh and as of one seven for the light grid, the light is working. That is my report for the evening. Thank you for bearing with me on that and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for the Mayor's Office? Lawrence?
I have a question about, you know, those unimproved sidewalks. Board of Water Supply runs their meter box and places in those areas. If cars are parking and they break the meter box and damages the line, is the homeowner responsible for fixing that?
If it damages, you're saying it damages the meter box because they parked on it?
Correct.
That is a good question for the Board of Water Supply. I will take that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny?
I have a question. I'm not sure if I'm addressing it at the right place, but for the storm drains or like the paved canal areas where there may be houseless folks living under, and if these are areas that are under city and county. Who who is responsible or who do who do we contact? I mean, are we just calling the police if they're stealing in the area and then living like right down under their bridge or something like that?
That's a good question and definitely is a good time to to voice the concern. Department of Community Services would be the team that does the community outreach. They would work with emergency services who oversees the whole new program. And so if you have a specific location or if anybody has done outreach, not that I recommend that you do, but you know of the individuals, we can provide that information to community services and then they can they can reach out.
That would be great.
Best course of action.
It's the the walking bridge right next to California Pizza Kitchen where we're priority centers. So there's a group of folks that are living directly under that walking bridge. And they've kind of stolen stuff from the adjacent farm and have been kind of doing some construction right right underneath that bridge.
Wait, that's is that city property, though?
The canal where they're living in.
Oh, they're in the canal. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Board Members, any more questions for Mayor's Office? Okay, all right, community members, any questions? Claire? Want to get the mic?
Haku, I think the house that member Suji was talking about was when you addressed the last time where there were two dwellings separated. You said there was, they were okay to build that, but the open yard had a wall that could and they were cited for something about that. So maybe you might want to review that for them. And I guess the second question I had regarding homelessness in the riverbanks. So you're saying that they're treated, it's treated differently if it's privately owned. I mean, if so, right out here, right next to the library and the open space we have here, the city land, there is a stream, I A stream. But, you know, the Korean church owns part of it and then they there's a stream and then they own the other little strip of land there. So does that, you know, it was brought to us at the community association meeting that because it's on private property, that the city can't do anything about it. But I think there has to be some kind of relief regarding that because can't necessarily ask the church members who are conflicted in a way to want to help to also then go enforce, you know, all the the vagrancy, the fires, et cetera, et cetera.
Wouldn't that be a trespassing?
Yeah, but they can't.
I mean, H P D would be.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Haku or Haku.
No, thank you, Chair. No, that's that's kind of what I was gonna say. I think when it's a trespassing issue, the police need to be involved in that. Whereas if it's city property, I think it's it's directly to community services and the whole new program. I I apologize, I don't know for sure on that, but the church would need to be the ones to to contribute. And I see that Councilor Okamoto's office has raised their hand. Maybe they can provide some additional background.
We run into this a lot with the golf course and Newtown Estates. They need the private entity needs to give permission to H P D to enter that space. But if it's private, there's nothing we can do about it unless the private entity allows for H P D to come onto that property.
Okay, thank you for that input.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Danny?
I just have a quick follow up. What if the house, like, there's currently no one living there? And so there's no homeowner present. But the folks that are living there are causing a disturbance to the community.
So that's a different process. We've we've had to face that before. It takes a lot of coordination with other departments. And so if there are is this is like that, please let us know. Mayor has taken a strong stance against, you know, squatters and this kind of circumstance and and has taken action. So please let us know immediately if there is a situation like that.
Yeah, there there are two right on Hikaha Street, so kind of at near the corner of Hikaha Street and Kanuku Street. There are two, one open lot that has no house on it where there are, it's just full of tents right now and folks that are kind of building and and whatnot. And then two houses down, there is an abandoned house as well.
Do you have the addresses of those?
I I can I can pull it and then send it to Curtis or send it to you. Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments for the Mayor's Office? Okay, nothing hurt. All right, thank you, Haku, for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, moving on to Councilmember Cordero's office.
Good evening, Happy New Year, Neighborhood Board Members and Neighbors. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to share my report. My report, Robert, on from my office is online and will be dropping the link to our report online right now. And I just want to highlight our calendar committees. So as you will hear often after I report, the opening day of the state legislature is tomorrow, so we had to shift our committee meetings around. And some of them are having two committees. So the Office of House, the Committee on Housing will be having two committees this week. The one in particular tomorrow at two thirty is something that I think will be of interest to many people because this is a discussion about the housing plan and housing department merger that the city administration or the this current administration has been planning for a while. So and this is a housing plan that we've been waiting for since our Senator Brandon Alefante has been a council member. So so it's been a very long time coming and so I'm very excited for that tomorrow at two thirty. I do want to highlight that I have three pages of updates for our Aya community. And I don't want to go in too much in depth in depth with this, but I can actually recall like Director Millis mentioned, but did he mention that they did receive a notice of violation for the monster home on Ulinay?
I did not mention that. Thank you.
Oh, you didn't. Okay. Oh, thank you, Director. So I do have an update as my first update on page two. I don't say do not want to read it, but we do note that the walls had openings and that it was not part of the approved plans and that they received notice of violations and that the division from the Department of Planning and Permitting will be monitoring it until compliance or it will continue to or yeah, and continue to monitor. Yes, thank you. But once again, we have everything from that page to the third page, which leads me to an update on the public hearings for the forty year old community gardens park rules. So I do want to highlight this because I know gardening is something very important for many of us. And I see some neighbors that definitely have really great gardens. And I want to ensure that if you are interested in community gardening, that you have your voice heard about the different park rules. It will be on January twenty eight, twenty twenty five. You can participate either in person or on in online. It will be at the Foster Botanical Gardens Conservatory Classroom. Next, I don't know if you've been paying attention or heard the news, but there's D P R parse classes that opened up at five P M. Yesterday. I know a lot of people were actually waiting for that site to open and sign up not just their kids, but also themselves or their their in-laws or their parents, themselves, their elderly parents to do a lot of different types of events at our parks. So there's a lot of activities there, so check it out. Next, you'll see that that there's new committee assignments as well as legislation. But I do want to reserve the time for any questions and discussion. So thank you, neighbors and community.
All right, Board Members, any questions for the Councilmember's office? Lawrence?
You know, the utility poles that are lighting our streets, is that something that the community has to be like a watchdog and inform? I guess Juan Electric or council members of those locations?
Well, first off, there's a lot of different types of utility poles. So if you are able to look at the different numbers or reference numbers that are on there, that will be able to help us refer you to the right utility company.
Yeah, because you know, like on Cam Highway, I noticed there's another utility pole leading over and hundreds, if not thousands and thousands of cars drive by there. Now, I'd assume that Juan Electric must drive there at least once a day. But I'm not sure if it's in the process that they're gonna try and fix that or straighten that. But is it the community's part to inform Juan Electric if there's a pole leading over or they monitor themselves?
We do encourage all of our community members to do see something, say something. And if you don't know where to go, we are able to assist you. But if you know that's the Hiko Utility Pole on Kamama Highway, please do call them. And if you need help with follow up, we can definitely do follow ups as well.
Okay, thank you. Board Members, any other questions? Okay, so I think you weren't here earlier, but we, when H P D was doing their present, their brief, it came up about the Makalapa Community Center and about resident or individuals, individuals like hanging out with their cars and partying in that parking lot. H P D kind of is like in a bind and saying that there's really no signage up to really kind of force hours in that parking lot. But maybe you and I could get with that community director and see if we could work something out with them. So H P D can actually go in there and and remove individuals so they're not partying and drinking and smoking till all hours of the night. Because we do, we had a resident here earlier who lives right near that location and was very frustrated with the activity that goes on that parking lot.
I do know that we replace the signs and the locks there often. So I do have to check that we've had a sign there because yeah, I mean, we're there.
They just take them down?
Possibly, but I have to double check.
Okay, well, let's let's you and I work together and talk to that community center director because I think you and I have talked to her or it's her, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we've talked to her before in the past, so let's let's figure out something and then we can get H P D to go in there and start enforcing that. Okay.
No, we're talking about the
The parking lot in front of that chain.
The parking lot in front of, okay, sorry. So that's at Honolulu Community Action Program, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one where the stabbings occurred, where the woman got killed.
Is it past the past the chain, though?
No, they're talking about right there in the parking lot with the tree. There's like a tree there. There's residents from that housing area that like park there. There's probably a group of ten to fifteen at any given time that are like drinking and smoking and
So I do know that state representative in the Ichiyama has been in constant communication with a lot of the immediate neighbors as the Honolulu Community Action Program as well as the Hawaii Public Housing Authority are under the state's purview. So I do want to, I don't have the best responses for that as for So I do want to, um, I don't have the best responses for that as for hours, but, um, I think maybe if, I guess all three of us then talk because.
Well, yeah, and then that's what I was getting at, because if we talk to the director, we can find out what she would recommend, right? Because they might have activities going on at certain hours or whatever. And then anything past that, we should probably prohibit the parking and, and usage of that parking lot. You see what I'm saying?
Right. Yeah, and I'll, I'll definitely, I know that Sean does, uh, Delos Reyes is here from, um, uh, Representative Ichiyama's office and we'll work together on that.
Cause if I'm not mistaken, I think the recent stabbing was a domestic, but it occurred at that location because they're all drinking. But there was another incident at that location too, a couple of months back, three months, four months ago. So, so this is now becoming an issue and a problem at that location in particular. So, okay, all right, thank you. Uh, community members, any questions? Claire? Yeah, they can't hear you. Sorry, Claire. If you're gonna ask a question, you gotta get up.
I know. Okay, so we're hearing rumblings again about Halawa District Park being a Hono site. Have you heard anything?
All, all I know is that they're gonna drill a well at Halawa Park. That's what it says right here. So they're gonna drill a well, monitoring well site A, and it's gonna be right here at Halawa Park. Okay. Yeah. Okay, all right. Uh, anything else from the community? Okay, nothing hurt. Thank you, ma'am, for your report. Um, okay, Councilmember Okimoto's office.
Uh, good evening, Chair, and good evening, board. Thanks for having me. Um, just a quick update here, uh, since the adjournment, our last meeting, we honored, uh, us, uh, former House Speaker, Councilmember Six, Calvin Say for his decades of public service. Uh, the council also considered a couple of bills. Uh, one of note that got deferred, uh, may want to keep an eye on is that empty homes tax. Um, I know you guys are gonna be talking about the, uh, the things in the zoning agenda, which deals with I A as well. Um, we had one concern, uh, for speeding on the Helly Street. Uh, resulted in nineteen stop sign violations, uh, citations and two verbal warnings. Uh, the officers will continue to con- conduct checks of the area, uh, when time permits, uh, on shift. Had a question from last week, or I'm sorry, last, uh, meeting. Uh, why do neighborhood boards have to operate under Sunshine Law and state legislators do not? Uh, it's because the state legislators ha- uh, have their own rules, the Senate rules and House rules, uh, which they vote on every two years. Uh, Sunshine hasn't applied to them since the inception of the law. Uh, state legislator's opener, opening day is tomorrow. We look forward to working closely with our colleagues in our state for this upcoming session. I wanted to say welcome, Pua. She's from, uh, Councilmember Say's, uh, office. Uh, she joined our team and she's on tonight as well. Um, willing to take any, uh, questions we have back with me.
Hello, everyone. I'm Pua from, um, Councilmember Okimoto's office. And, um, I also just wanted to add that there are important links, um, at also Councilman Okimoto's, uh, newsletter link in the chat. Um, if you guys have any questions for any important events or anything like that, please let us know. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Uh, board members, any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's? Lawrence?
Um, Councilmember Say, I believe, introduced a bill to defer that consent decree for, um, the secondary treatment, um, due to the, I guess, the cost of our added sewer fees. What is the status of that? Because everybody talks about the cost of living in Hawaii. But every time I watch the news, every couple of weeks, they're always talking about increasing fees here and there. Is that something that's gonna possibly go through, deferring that consent decree?
This could be up to the chair to, to basically, uh, reissue the bill into, uh, whichever committee it was. If I can take a look at that, would, do you know exactly which bill that was by any chance?
Oh, I'm not sure. It just, uh, came to mind when I was sitting here. Sorry.
Okay, I'll, 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 I'll look to see what, um, what, what was, what was done last, uh, last session and, and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Meeting members, any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Okay, nothing hurt. All right, thank you both for your reports. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Claire, ACA.
We have notes here. Uh, wow, this is so early. Um, so thank you, uh, for everybody's cooperation for the December fourteenth parade and fun fair. Uh, it was, well, we'd like to think it was a huge success. The fun fair, uh, was back after four, four years of inactivity, but it was very well attended. Uh, there were a lot of informational booths, a lot of, uh, free games, bouncers, people had a good time. We had a blood drive and we also had, uh, we had a Kaiser came and brought their vaccination ban. Um, so that it all worked out really well. Uh, you know, the problem about AIA is we've got so many hills. We're trying to figure out a parade route that is less hilly. Cause we did have a couple of people within the parade collapse on us, but, um, that wasn't our fault. Anyway, but it just, we just have so many hills here that there's not enough residential, um, here that we could, that we could do it. We're gonna do it again this coming December. We haven't met yet for the date yet. Um, I wanted to make what, our next meeting is January twentieth, which is the Martin Luther King Holiday again. But we will continue to meet, um, here and hybrid, so virtually like how you're doing here. But I'd really like to call attention to the fact that, you know, for many years, we've been trying to preserve those royal palm trees that are down by the post office. And just recently, and I don't know, not exactly who did it, but there are two no parking signs there. So there are, um, so the two trees are like this. There's one parking sign with a pole so that they can't jump the curb and park there. And on the other side, they can't jump the curb and come this way. So we're hoping that the poles will stay up with the signage and people will pay attention to that. I tried to specifically talk to somebody in person about that and they said, well, there's no parking here. So, I mean, there's no parking for their apartment building, so they couldn't park anywhere else. Anyway, so just to let you know, please keep your eyes open. If you see those poles go down, let us know so that we can get them put back up again. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for Claire?
Are those no parking signs on private property or is it on the city side?
It's actually, it belongs to the federal government. It's on the, yeah, because it's part of the post office lab. So we were working with the post office people, so it's, um, there's parking, there's land here, the trees, there's a sidewalk and then another curb here. So, so it's really on the federal parking, I mean, federal land.
Can HPD enforce that?
I don't see why not.
Is the signs are on the federal side?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but the parking isn't.
See, I think the advantage though is at least there's a pole there that somebody can't hop the fence and, I mean, hop the b- the b- and then park there. Cause it's the weight of the tree, the weight of the cars that were killing the roots of the tree.
Okay. All right, uh, any other questions? Danny?
I have a question, just some mahalo to you and your team for coordinating all of that. It was great.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, board member, or I mean, community members, any questions for ACA? Okay, nothing hurt. Okay, thank you, Claire. All right, we're gonna move on to board business and presentations. Uh, first item of, on the agenda is the filling in the vacant seat at large board position. You mentioned there might be a candidate that applied, yeah? Uh, is there anybody online that would want to, uh, apply for the vacant position, the at-large board vacant position? Yeah, we already asked the crowd here, though. Okay, nothing hurt. Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, presentation and discussion from Royal Summit residents on the care home being used as a halfway house.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dale Matsushita. And this is Claire Yim. We, we're both residents of, um, Royal Summit. And the reason we're here tonight is because, um, the home on our street was recently purchased by Catholic charities. And, um, the house will be used as a treatment facility for boys ages twelve to seventeen who have behavioral issues and that require twenty-four seven supervision. We and many others in our community, um, have safety, increased traffic and noise concerns. You know, we purchased our homes, um, in this area thinking that we were going to live in a, you know, single family community. Um, but now that, you know, there's a treatment facility that, you know, that no, no longer holds true. So I guess also our concern is why is the state allowing treatment facilities to run in residential communities?
Okay, continue. I mean, we'll, we'll follow up with questions after you're done with your presentation.
So again, you know, it's just, we, we'd like that question answered. It's like, why is the state allowing treatment facilities to set up shop in communities that, you know, we, we thought were single family residents, you know, communities? It's like, I don't understand why that needs to happen. Department of, um,
Well, they wouldn't even know that answer. They don't know.
We do.
Oh, you do? Okay, so can you explain that to us then, please?
So, um, the Department of, um, Planning and Permitting issued a special treatment facility therapeutic living, um, zoning clearance to Catholic charities.
So we learned of this after the sale was complete. And after we actually emailed Senator Alefante's office, cause we didn't know what was going on. And through there, Senator Alefante gave us the DPP letter letting us know what was gonna be opened at that house. And we've been just, um, you know, we, I think we didn't get any kind of community information to give us a heads up or even inform us of what was going on. I don't know if Catholic charities did any kind of community, um, surveying, you know, to see what, you know, where they're placing this treatment facility. And yeah, so we are, you know, concerned very much so for our safety. We have a lot of children in the neighborhood. The school bus runs along the main highway, which is one house away from this facility. Two streets above, there's a park. We do have a rec center that is open to all members of the Newtown Estates community. And there's Alphabet, Alphabet Land Preschool, which is right next to the community center. And there's all, you know, a lot of things that, you know, that we have concerns about. You know, we've lived, lived in the neighborhood, you know, for many years. And, um, I guess it was a shock to us that we weren't informed or even, you know, given a, any kind of, yeah, heads up, you know, on what is coming. And right now, you know, this is where we're at and we have concerns.
Community association. We live in a community association, so seems, we're not sure, but seems like, um, they should at least present it to them and have our members vote on it or discuss it. We had no input or anything. It just happened. Houses sold. This happened now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, board members, before I say anything, you guys got any questions, concerns, comments about this? Yeah, I wish Tracy was here because I guarantee you Tracy would lose his mind over this. Okay, go ahead. Russell, go ahead.
Paul, we'll go to you next. I certainly, that bothers me. And I don't, you're an answer from DPP as far, as far as why would you approve such a permit in a residential community, especially one like Royal Summit?
Well,
And not brief the board or the community association?
Well, and, and I, I think, Russell, sorry to interrupt real quick, but I think you're right spot on. At any actions I think they've done like this in the past where we've had, like, remember the senior care home and things like that? DPP is what now NASA community's input prior to actually issuing that permit.
Right, right.
I don't know why they didn't do it in this. Yeah, I don't know why they didn't do it in this particular instance. And maybe it was just a breakdown in communication. Um, so I think we're gonna have to have that discussion with DPP. Cause they have rescinded permits in the past, so, but go ahead, go ahead.
That was, that was my sentiments exactly. Uh, you know, this comes as a surprise to the community. I'm just surprised to us. And we need to have someone from the Department of Planning and Permitting tell us why they okayed this without any community input.
Yeah. And now for the, for the charities, I, I know that we have a significant amount representation. Uh, I, I get what you guys are doing here. I'm actually for this kind of thing. But, um, when we've had similar types of, um, of, um, programs be instituted in our community, um, we've worked with the community in those instances and we've come up with, with pretty good plans. And, um, the ones I can think of, we've never heard any issues based on those agreements that we've developed with those communities. So, um, I just don't understand why DPP did this without reaching out to us. They know better than this, honestly. So, um, so Haku? Okay, Councilmember Cordero? Okay, it's Bowles. Okay, so, uh, office, office, Okimoto's office.
Yes, I'm here. Uh, it's, it's under, my understanding is that DPP issued a permit for them to put up video cameras. So thi- this is a Catholic Charities run program that got full state approval. The city had nothing to do with the approval of the program. That's what I was told. And I have, uh, some documents on that, which I did provide for some of the residents in the area as well. Uh, but the, we didn't know about this until they were set to move three days into the house. Um, so you're in the.
So they didn't get approval for operating the actual facility? They just got approval for cameras?
No, so I was told, uh, that they had approved the, the, the construction of like cameras to put in maybe locks on the doors, whatever they approved. It wasn't for an operation of the program itself. That's what the state issued. The state issued the, the program. DPP issued the ability to work on the house to make sure the facility was safe.
So Senator Alefante?
Our governor's rep is here.
Or the governor's rep.
First of all, thank you Dale and the Newtown community residents in Royal Summit for coming this evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Brandon Alefante from State Senate. I only answer questions based on what I know. When I first heard about this from Dale and community residents, it was first to my knowledge. So I was very shocked about this, especially in a covenant, in an area that has covenants in Royal Summit with the Newtown Estates Association. So I have asked Catholic charities to come here tonight if you want to hear with them. From my understanding, um, there will be a follow-up meeting, I believe, on February fifth at the Newtown Estates Community Association, uh, before their board. They've asked myself, um, Catholic charities as well as representatives from the state, um, Health Planning Division, which is head up by Dr. John Glenn. Um, my understanding is that they also have to do permits in addition to DPP's permit, in addition to DOH's permit. So there's a whole process involved with this. Uh, one thing that I just thought of tonight as I was listening to committee concerns, uh, we still have time for bill introduction. One thing that we could look into is doing a public notification requirements and for communities that may have A O A O's associations or covenants that they would have to appear before them or get some sort of approval. So we'll work on draft language on that. But in terms of process, I believe Sarah Anton and Catholic Charities Chair, if you want to hear. Now, I've asked Catholic charities, um, when I met with them, if they have walked the neighborhood at that time, they have not. So I don't know, and this is about a couple of weeks ago since we met. So I've encouraged them to go out and reach out to the community residents, especially Dale and the folks here. So I can understand the frustration. Um, so they're here if you want to listen to them and if the committee wants to, Chair.
Quickly, hold on, ma'am, just for a second. No, no, just hold on for a second. I, no, 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 no. Hey, neither one of you talk to each other right now, okay? Go ahead and say your, I, I want to, I, I don't really want just go into a long detailed explanation. Because probably what we'll do is we're gonna reschedule this and you guys will present your presentation at the next board meeting. And then we'll have more of a discussion at that point, okay? But I'm gonna tell you right now, like, right after this meeting, I'm gonna be contacting DPP and asking them why the, why they issued that permit. Because they shouldn't have done that, okay? In the past, what, what has happened, okay? And now I'm trying to help you here. It doesn't sound like I am, but I am, okay? We've had, so we've had other entities come in that provided senior care, you know, you know, assisted, you know, living facilities. We've had all these kind of other, you know, programs which we are full supportive along with this. I'm fully supportive of this. But the, the key thing was, was that they walked the neighborhood, they talked to the neighbors. Those neighbors came to us and said, these are our concerns. We went back to those entities and said, hey, these are the concerns. How can we meet in the middle, negotiate and figure out a way to go forward? And we've done that and it's been successful. You guys jumped the gun, literally, okay? So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to work backwards on this and try and figure out how to resolve their concerns, but also meet your guys' concerns as well too. Okay? So that's what we're going to have to go forward on. That's not going to happen tonight. Yes, now go ahead, please.
So when it came time to open our facility, we did consult with DPP and with the state offices to get licensing. And we were advised that these are the steps and those are the steps that we followed. We do acknowledge that we did not go door to door until after concerns came up. And we are apologetic for that. And we have reached out to offer any kind of support or reassurance of safety based in fact and data on 25 years of providing the same service in the Uwano area in a residential neighborhood. And we have provided that to the concerned neighbors as well, as well as the flyer that we brought here today and distributed amongst everyone else. They are also provided, door to door, every single resident was provided with my business card so they can contact me if there are any questions, concerns or things that come up.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't necessarily throw the fault on you. Okay? That's not what I'm trying to say here. I think the fault really resides with DPP. They know better. And so they didn't follow that. And maybe that's just because of turnover and, you know, they got new leadership down there. They weren't aware of it. I don't know what the issue is. But I'm going to go to the bottom of DPP. The thing though that I know, I'll get to Russell in a second. The, the, once, from now until the next board meeting, can you extend an invite to this board to come over and look at that facility and look at what your operation looks like and look at that neighborhood? Would you please do that?
Yeah. Is there a way to get all this, the email list or something?
You can reach out to Curtis or myself. And I can give you a card, but I'm also online. I have my own, and I'll, I'll coordinate with my board to do that. Okay? Okay. So with that said, Russell, you, you got, you want to say anything?
Yeah. Yeah. I was, I was just going to ask Catholic Charities, I had understood, maybe I was wrong, misunderstood, but just correct my understanding. I understand you closed on the transaction. You purchased the house. So that would have meant you purchased the house at Royal Summit before even getting your permits from the state and county? And of course, talking to the neighbors, but is that right?
Yes, but we talked to the state.
At Royal Summit now, it's a very expensive home, yeah. Yeah.
Correct. So we, we selected the home based on the inventory that was available across the island. We looked completely across the whole island of Milwaukee.
And you closed on it.
For a home that would meet the requirements that we needed. And this is the home that met those requirements. Simultaneously during that process, we were talking with the, the city, the state, all of those different offices to make sure that we were meeting the criteria to get all the proper licensing and that it would be, it would be possible. And we were told that it was. Yes, that was during the escrow and prior to closing and then after closing. It was all happening simultaneously.
I thought there was a requirement for them to come to the board, actually. Remember when we had to deal with this in a situation?
We, we were told that because that we are only serving five youth, that it is considered to be a family and that we would not need to do, take those steps. Be, well, I don't, I didn't, I wasn't told that that was a loophole. I was told that that was fact and the way that the city did the licensing. So we went ahead with that process because that is the information we were provided. And we had to turn in a number of things and we provided them with the information to get all of those things. I just want to mention that, this is Kaylee. She's from the Department of Health. If anyone has questions for her as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, board members, any other questions? Because we're going to revisit this one. I guarantee it. Okay. Claire, community?
And, and this is so that you can take it back. So are you, are they saying that they're going to have no more than five people at this residence? To when you talk about, you surveyed all the areas and you felt that this was a home that became available to you folks? In reality, I can't imagine, you know, there are lots of other homes for sale. There probably, there are a lot of other homes for sale that, and is this servicing youth in this district that is your prime target, target? And that's why you selected this house? Or, I mean, I can't imagine that the area that you have the house is where you have a lot of transitional youths that need help. Okay?
So the program that we run, we accept youth from statewide, all across the state and every island. And so when, again, when we were looking at a new home to purchase, we were looking at the size, the number of bedrooms and, and that it was in a safe neighborhood for the youth that we are taking care of. Yeah. And so we did look again at many, many homes. And this is the home that met all of the criteria that we needed to deliver that service.
And, and what's the, I mean, what types of youths are we talking about that you guys are supporting in this?
So I handed out the flyer there. It's males, ages 12 to 17. And they do come from trauma backgrounds and they are referred to us through the Department of Health.
Right.
And they need a very structured environment to deal with their trauma.
Okay. Have they committed trauma themselves or are they a victim of trauma?
Both. Yes. So there are some youth who have, you know, so.
Are we talking violent youth?
There are youth that have what is referred to as sexually reactive behavior. And so that is a behavior that is acted out as a direct result of abuse that they have and trauma that they have incurred. It's different than a sex offender, which is a criminal behavior and that is a predatory behavior. This is a trauma induced behavior. And the recidivism and the treatment of it is much more successful than that of predatory offenders. So the safety that we are, that you're alluding to, I would like to just speak to that if I could and provide some data. So in.
Hold on ma'am, just for a second. Because we're going to probably go way into this. Let's, let's save that for another time. Okay? Okay, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm going to stop because I have a million questions, but any other community members before we move off? Okay. Please reach, I'll give you guys my contact information. Let's start setting something up. You folks, same thing. Okay? We're going to start talking. All right? And we'll figure this out. Okay? I, we have a hundred percent success rate. We'll get there. All right?
And can I just make up, just a wrapping comment to your point about that kind of track record? I appreciate being invited to this to kind of see the civic engagement. I think it's important to separate, from my view, I see a very invested community and I see very dedicated mental health professionals. And so I feel like it'll be important to separate out disagreement with the rules, which I feel like Senator Elafante did highlight. Like there are ways to change rules that we feel like are not good. In this case though, we have been following the rules. And so that's a, a kind of a separate issue and we do want to work together. We, it would be very helpful to get a list of all of those questions so that we could address them. Happy to, you know, I can understand that this is sort of an unknown thing. And so people are going to have worries and concerns, but we have been providing this service. It is safe. These are vulnerable children and they deserve to live in a community. And so we can work together. I'm so happy to hear you say that you have this track record of working together. We're very invested in doing that and being good neighbors.
Yeah, again, I want to reiterate that we're not blaming you because you guys didn't know. DPP knows that they need to inform the community and they failed to do that. So, so this is not on you. Okay? This, neither one of you, I know, I see your look on your face, by the way. So it's not on you. Okay? But, but, but it's more on DPP failures in this regard because they should have done that. Okay? And they have done that in the past and I don't know why they didn't do it this time around.
Absolutely striving to do the right.
I know you are. And, and I do appreciate the work that you guys do. So don't get me wrong because it's highly, highly needed. So, yeah, go ahead, Senator.
If I can add one more thing, maybe if DOH or Catholic Charities can explain your process and if there's public comment or public input for their permitting process that the residents and the board and us, we can participate in if you guys have that information for your permitting.
Well, I can speak to, I'm with the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Division, the State Health Planning and Development Agency, which Dr. Lewin is the head of. And he'll be attending the Newtown meeting in February. He is actually, his division is the one that takes care of the certificate of need process, which does have a public review and input component to it. So he'll be able to speak to that. The certificate of need in this case is still going through the process. So it has not gotten to the public input phase of their process yet.
Okay, make it quick and then we're done.
They say that it has success rate in Uwano. When we look up the department for need base, there's nothing in Uwano. There's two houses, one in Capone, one in Waipahu, 2003. Nothing in Uwano.
Okay.
Just want to state that.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. We'll, we'll look, you know, you guys have been, you know, let us know about that. Okay? Later on, but for now, thank you guys. Thank you for coming here. I really appreciate it. And we're going to have a, yeah, go ahead Lawrence.
As far as these facilities, where is the next closest facility in this area?
The Department of, what type of facility?
The type that you're, that you're servicing right now.
But we, we are the only in the state.
As far as this home that you're using for this type of facility, where's the next closest home in this vicinity?
So, so the type of program that they run is called a community-based residential program. We do have others not specific, not the specific level that they run, but, but we do have other community-based residential facilities in the state. We have one on the North Shore. We have one in Waipahu, I believe. I don't think there are any others in IAA. We just, we actually just wrapped up our request for proposal process and just awarded a bunch of new contracts. So I don't want to say incorrect thing, but we can absolutely provide the locations of our other community-based residential programs.
Can you take that for note? And then when you do your presentation at the next board meeting, we can talk.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Send us all of your questions, then we can be.
We'll do that too. Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on. Before we do that, I want to talk to you guys right after we're done here. Okay? Presentation and discussion on affordable housing project at the Haile. Place.
Okay, Aloha Chair, members of the board. My name's Keegan Flaherty. I'm a Senior Development Associate with the Kennekeia. You may recall past presentations on this project, the Affordable Housing Project. And the last time we presented on this project was to you back in April of last year. Can you hit the next slide, please? So this project, just to refresh your memory, is Makai of Kam Highway located on Le Poa Place. Next slide. You take a closer look there. It's located Eva of the Pearl Kai Shopping Center. Next slide. So as we promised from you last year, April 9th was that date last we presented to you guys. We were going to come back and provide an update on the project in the beginning of this year. So I've outlined some updates from when we last presented the project. One of the first things to share that you may have noticed is that the project has a new facade to it. This is still a work in progress. We want to, you know, try to, you know, match maybe earth tones, but this is just a piece of paper, but wanted to share the progress there. We originally proposed to have three financing scenarios, one of them being an affordable for sale project. However, City Council, when meeting with them last year, had asked us to remove that scenario from our entitlement application, just to focus on the rentals. It doesn't mean that this is entirely eliminated from, you know, the project in the future. If we're unsuccessful in obtaining the financing that we need for low income rental housing or workforce rental housing, we would just have to go back to the city and request amendment to the entitlements to pursue affordable for sale housing project. Additionally, our plan was to submit a financing application for rental housing rolling fund tier two financing, which we thought would be available last fall. However, it was not. We do anticipate it being available this fall. And also just wanted to update because throughout our community consultation and outreach that we've done and our engagement steps with Neighborhood Board and IAA Community Association, we were really able to take in, listen and analyze the concerns about hydrology and water in the area and impacts from the proposed development. We incorporated all of our findings that we found into our environmental assessment, which is part of the process. And within that process, DPP analyzed what we, you know, put in our report and they issued a finding of no significant impact, meaning that there's no environmental impacts that we need to mitigate for this development. And we'll go into more details later in this presentation. Next slide. Oh yeah, here's just a look at, on the left side of what the project used to look like, the facade. And then the new renderings on the right, the size and shape pretty much stayed the same. But yeah, again, we want to make sure that this project enhances the area architecturally. So we welcome any feedback on that. Slide six, next slide. So again, to reiterate, when we started this project, we looked at ways at providing affordable housing and have entitlements that could allow flexibility to actually execute this and build affordable housing units. Our priority really is to provide rental housing for low income families at 60% AMI and below. However, this financing approach is super competitive and oversubscribed. You know, we've committed to submitting applications for obtaining this funding. But we're also considering the missing middle, which is the workforce housing where these are your teachers, post-secondary teachers, your healthcare workers that may not qualify. They make a little bit too much for the low income rental housing that, you know, we'd be, we'd be doing, but you know, they don't make enough to actually afford market rate rentals for new product, you know, housing units like this in, in similar areas. So this is really a need that's being unmet and these are the two you know, incomes that we would be targeting with separate financing applications. Next slide. Here are the projected rental rates for the two scenarios. Only people who meet the income qualifications for these income levels will be able to rent these units. These will be restricted to, you know, just renting these to people at or below the income levels for a period of at least 66 years. And anyone who makes over a hundred percent AMI will not qualify for this housing. Next slide. So as we're underway with our EA, our environmental assessment and conducting community outreach and engagement, we became more aware of some of the important cultural considerations to account for in incorporating mitigation measures into our projects. So in our environmental assessment, we shared measures we're taking to mitigate any impact to water in the area, which goes without saying is a vital resource to protect for many reasons, as you all know. And this is something we're sensitive about too. And we don't want to negatively impact the water. So a full analysis was done. It was included in our final environmental assessment and substantiated by a hydrology report. And so we wanted to share some of these insights we found during this analysis. So you know, one of the first things is, you know, the quantity of water available. So our project's going to be utilizing the border water supply system. We will not have wells on our site drawing from, or water from the ground. Also, when the project's complete, we'll have several water conservation measures in place to reduce overall water consumption, such as rain catchment systems for irrigation, recycled water, drought tolerant plants and native landscaping to reduce the amount of water needed through irrigation. We'll also have permeable surfaces that allow for natural filtration of water back into the aquifer. We'll also incorporate water efficient practices within the residential community, such as using low flow, water flow fixtures into the technologies designed to conserve water. And, you know, incorporating these measures into the planning and implementation now, it's possible to minimize the impact on the border water supplies, available water resource and ensure that this is a. you know, it's gonna be sustainable for the long term for both current and future generations. Um, as a result of other discussions we've heard from the community, uh, we'll be implementing design and education elements into the project that promote the cultural and historic context of this specific area. And we wanna do that by collaborating with community organizations. So, you know, that'll come, um, later in the design. Um, you know, we're working on a design package right now on our affordable housing project in Maui, um, with the U S Fish and Wildlife, uh, for example. And, you know, uh, our project's next to a wetland and we're incorporating, um, the endangered water bird species that are there into the cultural and, uh, architectural design element in the project and just highlighting, um, those wetlands. Next slide. Another aspect of the development that was brought up, uh, was our plans for stormwater drainage and how, uh, it may contribute to water resource in the area. Um, beginning with construction, um, of the proposed development, our construction team's gonna ensure that we're gonna be incorporating best management practices, uh, you know, to prevent this stormwater runoff from the construction site. Um, these will include erosion control measures in place to keep things contained, uh, while works being done, using erosion control blankets. We'll have site grading that's gonna be minimal as the site's already developed. This is a highly developed neighborhood already. Uh, silk fencing will prevent sediment runoff into the nearby water bodies. We'll have to create and receive, uh, approval of a stormwater pollution prevention plan that'll treat and reduce water pollution during construction. So there's a process to all of this that gets reviewed and permitted. Uh, best management practices around the perimeter of the project site, um, at the drainage ditch and the drainage cache basins along Le Poa Place will be implemented to minimize, uh, adverse effects. So once complete, the proposed housing development, it's gonna meet the water quality standards for the city and county of Honolulu. Um, we will have constructed, uh, after the building's done, uh, storm drainage improvements that are anticipated to minimize stormwater discharge rates from the project site. So we'll have permeable surfaces that'll reduce runoff and allow for natural filtration of water back in the ground, as I mentioned. Uh, we'll have other site design strategies that'll direct stormwater runoff to areas where structure is designed to remove pollutants, such as native landscaping, that'll also help stabilize the soil and prevent erosion. Uh, additionally, our operational and management procedures, once the project's in place and people are living there, uh, will help prevent trash, food waste, oil, grease, et cetera, from, uh, encountering stormwater runoff and thus prevent those pollutants from entering both the groundwater and the harbor. Um, also, it's important to note that the amount of stormwater runoff that's allowed to leave the site currently is not gonna be increased. It will actually be minimized. So our onsite drainage design I was describing will actually be able to accommodate more stormwater, uh, more effectively and more environmentally friendly than the current site can. Um, we're not allowed to discharge more stormwater into the drainage canal than is what's currently allowed. Um, it'll actually be cleaner than what it currently is because the onsite improvements, improvements that I mentioned, that'll help these, uh, you know, prevent these pollutants from encountering the stormwater as it moves to the harbor. Next slide. So that's it. Uh, yeah, thank you, guys, for the opportunity just to provide an update on the project.
Oh, sorry, um, we're gonna, uh, thank you so much. We're gonna take questions from the board first, all.
Uh, yeah, um, is there, uh, any increase in number of parking stalls that's gonna be associated with the project?
So we are at 147 parking stalls. Um, and there's, uh, 153 units, which we feel, um, is adequate. And, um, any, uh, more parking stalls, uh, or any less parking stalls would be infeasible.
As I've mentioned in my previous discussions with you, um, the idea of only, of not even having more than one parking stall per unit with the way we live in Hawaii, where everyone has a car, maybe not for work. I know you mentioned, oh, they're near the station, rail station, so they use rail. Yeah, but they still need to have their car to go to the grocery store, to take their kids to school and childcare. So it's totally inadequate only to not even have one parking stall per unit.
Board members, any other? Bye. Sir. Can you come up to the, oh, that was, okay.
Thank you. It, when I sit too long, that's what happens. So you've presented to us before at the I A A Community Association and, and next week I hope you present to us again. But I think we have a couple of concerns. Currently, you're talking about replacing and you saw the picture of where it's located. Can you bring that back up? Hello, can you bring up the picture, the slide that has where they're located and how close they are to the shoreline? So right now they're located in a special management, right? They're located in a special management area. You see, there's water below that line there. The, uh, commitment highways on the top. They're replacing two, no, six, two-story buildings with one eight-story building. And, and with the same footprint, right? You're not taking up any more land, taking that same footprint. So you're knocking down six low-rise buildings and you're putting up one big eight-story building. Uh, our concern is not so much the, what you're gonna throw off as far as stormwater, whatever. What happens when the water comes in from the harbor? And the, you have King Tides and you have that at Pearl Kai Shopping Center now. Half of the parking lot is underwater. If you go to where Fabric Mart is, that building was, the last building was built on water-filled land. And so that building rocks and, um, the water fills up. And as you even go into that harbor center, you have water coming out of the storm drains. Okay, so you're talking about, I don't know how many, how many units are there currently there? And you're talking about building 153 units, um, which doesn't, doesn't account for how many residents there are, right? I mean, 'cause there are 153 units, but that's not single fam, a single-person units. They're, uh, you're gonna be more than one person in every unit. Okay. They're three bedrooms. So if you say, well, you multiply that by three, you're talking about over 450 people. Um, we just don't think it's, that. No, we just don't think, um, it's purposely designed to be, that area is a special management, special management area, which means it's protected. The waterfront is protected. Um, and I think it, you haven't really addressed those environmental concerns that we have and the, the sides of the building. Fixing the face of the outside of the building doesn't address the issue of how big it is, where it is along the water, and how the water will go up into the building.
Oh, Richard Pope. Uh, going back to the parking, um, was the numbers increased from the first time you presented last year? Number of stalls?
We actually lost three stalls.
Oh, lost three?
Yeah.
And was that not because of, like, right? And was that because of, um, talking with people in the community? Or I guess, how did you get to that?
No, that was, uh, something that resulted, uh, you know, from a design change, um, in the structural system. We lost three.
I'm sorry, oh. Lawrence, go ahead.
Even as far as their parking, even if you look at like Salt Lake, where we have condos in that area, the street is packed with cars. It's hard to believe that with 153 units, you're only gonna need 147 parking stalls. All these other cars are gonna bleed off onto the street, take up all that parking in that area.
Okay. Jane?
And as electric vehicles become more common, you're gonna need stalls where people, you know, that are equipped with electrification for that purpose. So it's gotta be figured out.
Yeah, any other questions from board members? Hey, community? Okay, um, sorry, I, I got from the last presentation, got a little, um, sidetracked there. But, uh, I think, um, is there a way for you to come back with, like, answers to some of the questions that have been presented over to you or concerns? How you're gonna address those?
Yeah, um, I can start by, uh, addressing some of them that I remember. Um, you know, parking, like I said, the parking that, uh, you know, we're currently presenting, if we go any less or any higher, the project will be infeasible and we won't be able to provide affordable housing in the area whatsoever. Um, and.
Are you meeting the standards dictated in terms of, like, residents to parking?
Yeah, so, um, no parking is required in this area.
And that's because of the, what, because of rail or?
Uh, partly, yes.
Okay. All right, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, continue.
The second component of, you know, water coming up from the harbor and the streams up to the project with flooding issues, um, that is not an issue. That is something that we heard from the community, is something that we looked at and is substantiated in our environmental assessment, um, and reports that it's not an issue that needs to be mitigated.
Are you in a flood zone?
No.
Okay, are you, you're in a tsunami zone, though, right?
Uh, it's an extreme tsunami zone, but nothing needs to be mitigated at this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, what else was there? The what?
Yes, we are. And so the environmental assessment that was done and the findings of no significant impact, as well as an SMA, uh, permit application was done, uh, as a result of being in the SMA. Uh, yeah, it's, it's available publicly and has been for quite some time.
Can you reach out and give that link to Curtis and communicate that to the rest of us? Thank you. Okay. Board members?
Sorry, I do remember another one, electric vehicle parking stalls. We will have six of those currently planned, so, um.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, any other questions, guys? Sorry. All right, thank you. Oh, hold on, sorry, Councilmember Cordero? Oh, and Russell, sorry. Yeah, Russell.
I just had a comment. I was gonna, also, I was glad to see that, um, the project may be opening up to market, uh, market rentals. Uh, I would encourage the developer to also possibly look at the 120 AMI possibility, opening that up, because those, those, uh, those, those and the way they're above AMI are still, still not quite enough oftentimes to, to live in Hawaii or rent a space in Hawaii. So I would encourage the developer to look at that if he can. Thanks. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Cordero, do you have any?
Yeah, uh, she just reminded me, um, to mention that because of our environmental assessment that was done, um, it afforded us the opportunity to, uh, go to the zoning committee, um, with city council for the SMA, um, which, uh, you know, has resolutions out there as well, um, on city council website for that zoning committee this Thursday.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, sorry. To add to that, too, there's not, there's an additional resolution for the 21H entitlement application, which is, uh, primarily focused on, uh, the financing and other, uh, components of the project to make it feasible.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, with that, thank you, sir. Appreciate the brief.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Moving on, uh, discussion and motion on Pearl City Neighborhoods Board Resolution to Approve and Train Volunteers to Issue Violation Tickets. Did, uh, the board review this resolution that I sent to the board? No, no? You did? You did? Okay. Basically, basically, it's like civilian volunteers who can issue tickets, like for parking violations, traffic violations. Um, I don't know how or if the board has any appetite for, for this kind of activity to vote on it.
I move to table.
Okay. All right, anybody want a second? Okay, Richard? Okay, any objections to, to the move to table?
We need, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Russell.
What, what does that mean?
Yeah, I guess, I guess Ron instructed me right here, right now, by the way. So the proper, I guess, would be to just kill it? Yeah, okay, so a motion to, to, to not, uh, discuss or, uh, so, on this particular.
So I, I move to not consider this proposal.
Thank you. Okay, who wants to second that motion? Okay, second. Uh, any objections?
Well, I'd like to.
Russell, did I answer a question?
Oh, well, if it's to defer or not discuss it, I, I, I'd like to discuss it, maybe not tonight or some other night. Is that possible?
Um, okay. Do you wanna read the bill or read the legis, or I should say, the, uh, president, or, uh, the resolution?
Sorry, I don't have it up. I don't have it up right now in front of me, but I, I did look at it and I, I always, I thought it, but I thought it was, I actually thought you had an agenda for our support this evening.
I did, um, but clearly not a lot of the board members have read that. So maybe we could, we'll just table it for next, I'll put it on the agenda next. Yeah, we'll postpone it to the next board meeting. I'll put it back on there again. Okay? But for now, it's off the, off the agenda. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, discussion and motion on the proposed site for new landfill on Oahu. Mr. Higa. Yours.
There's gonna be a meeting tomorrow in Wahele regarding the landfill.
Okay.
So as far as, um, seems like majority sense, people don't want it there. But as the mayor was saying, they looked at other locations and they don't have any other locations that'd be a prime location unless they change the resolution as far as where the landfill could be located. But I'll probably attend that meeting tomorrow and then I'll get that.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, um, suspend this one as well, too, and put it on the agenda for next meeting. Okay. All right. And, uh, okay, moving on, approval written summary for video record Tuesday, November 12, 2024. And everybody review the minutes or the written summary of the video record? Any, any changes, any updates, edits? No corrections? So anybody wanna make a motion to approve the, um, video record for Tuesday, November 12, 2024? Okay. We don't have to second that?
Yeah, I think you, I think it's.
I think you do.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, I don't, I know you're the master of this, so, so. Okay. Okay. Are there any objections to the approval of the minutes? Um, I know we usually do, I. Um, is there any objections to the approval of the minutes from, uh, Tuesday, November 12, 2024? If there are no objections, the minutes will be approved. Okay, nothing heard. The minutes are approved for November 12, 2024. Okay, moving on. State and official reports, U S Congressman Ed Case's office. Don't see him on. Okay. Okay, moving, hey, Russell, you wanna put your hand down?
I'm trying, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Governor Green's office. And then you put it right back up.
Good evening.
Okay, good evening.
Chair, board members and members of the community, I'm Janelle Sanie, she representing the office of the governor. Um, just, uh, we'll make it quick. And the, the point you to the governor's January newsletter, it's, uh, in the Google Drive and also available on the governor's website at governor.hawaii.gov. He does cover, uh, affordable housing initiatives, tax reform, uh, over the next couple of years. Maui wildfire recovery and formation of a climate action team. And also has a link to the biennium budget for the next two years. Proposal, budget proposals. Um, to get back to board member Higa about his question on Maui wildfire recovery funding and, uh, the, most of the federal funds are, are being used, $3 billion through FEMA. And there are other federal agencies contributing, including they just announced the U S Housing and Urban Development. Just announced they have about 1.6, they have allocated $1.6 billion in, for Maui recovery funding. On the state side, the state's portion of that one Ohana Fund is $65 million. And that's coming from the general funds that were appropriated by the state legislature last session. The state is also expected to contribute about $600 million towards the recovery efforts, which probably will be mostly replacement of infrastructure and state office buildings that were destroyed and state facilities. Or remember, he also had a question about inequities, about how Hiko's power outages impact taxpayers, especially low income families and Kupuna on fixed income. PUC did respond, and I sent that to board member Higa. They said that they are, there are ongoing discussions on the energy equity and justice docket, so they are looking at that. Hiko is required by law to present, to provide customers at least twice a year notification of how they can claim for any losses or damage due to power outages. And customers have 30 days to file a claim with Hiko from the date of the outage. There is a helpline also available through Hiko. And if customers are not satisfied with Hiko's response, then we file a complaint with the PUC either online or call the PUC. So that's it. I can take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am, for your report. Russell, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you, Janelle. If you could check for me, I want to explain a situation I'm doing, I have right now with Hiko. I'm currently trying to install solar panels for battery storage. And part of that process occurred to me because I live in an older home with knob and tube electrical wiring, at least part of the house, I had to upgrade that. But one of the things that Hiko is requiring for the electrical permit is relocation of my meter from inside the patio to closer to the street. And I asked the Hiko guys, and I know my electricians have asked the Hiko guys, why do we need that today? Because now everything is read by, I think, online. They have installed a new meter where they don't have to come out to the house anymore to read the meter, they can do it just by digitally. So why do as a homeowner, who's trying to actually do renewable energy at his home, you know, and yet being, having to have the burden of having to relocate, I gotta pay all the costs for that now, relocating the meter out closer to the street, I can understand in the older days when they actually sent out the meter readers. But today, they don't do that anymore. They don't need to do that, and they don't. But Hiko, I think, might have a almost bureaucratic mentality and saying it's a rule or some kind of rule that they must follow. And so I would ask if you could check with PUC if that's really true and what's the logic behind that requirement? Especially today when they don't no longer send meter readers to the homes to read your bill? Thank you, that's, that's, that's it, yeah.
I, I'll forward that question to PUC.
I'm not sure, but I can give a possibility. Usually, the way the code is going is so that the meter is visible, so then the fire department comes, they can find the shut, how to shut the house down in a hurry. So it's probably, it may be a visibility thing. That's why they move it out towards the street.
I would also argue this is a Hiko question, not necessarily a governor question, but we can
The Hiko, I missed the Hiko representative when he was
Well, he wasn't, they didn't show up because there's, there's power outages happening all over the place, so that's why they, you know, they're dealing with that. But maybe we could, maybe that's another question you can have with Hiko, because that sounds more like a Hiko question, Russell, but.
I can try to contact Hiko and have them.
All right, well, appreciate that. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Lawrence?
You know, Hiko recently sold off American Savings Bank, and they got approximately 400 million for that. As far as the state's portion due to the Maui wildfires, the state was gonna throw in 800 million. Since Hiko sold off that asset, then the state throw in only 400 million because seemed like there's a lot of programs and things that need funding. The DOE stuff, housing, all kinds of things that need additional funding. Or is, I'm not sure what's happening with all the money and the bookkeeping as far as where all the monies coming from and going.
You mean private money or state money?
Oh, the, so, Horn Electric is a private company.
Yes.
And the state, which is the state of Hawaii, is providing $800 million to help Horn Electric settle their Maui issues. But recently, Horn Electric sold off American Savings Bank, their portion that they owed, ninety some percent, and they got $400 million. Will that offset what the state is contributing to all the Maui issues?
I can check.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you for your report, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Hawaii Department of Transportation?
Yes, good evening, Chair. Hope you can see my screen, but good evening, Happy New Year's Chair Wood and members of the neighborhood board, Casey Alver from the State DOT Highways Division. Last Friday, I received an email from Senator Alafonte concerning the periodic overgrowth at 99-919 Hala, Halava Heights Road that is blocking the resin site distance when they exit the driveway. I'm working with our Wauwai District Office to cut back the overgrowth and to see if we can permanently remove the vegetation and install something else so we can eliminate the maintenance safety problem for the DOT and the residents. Also on Friday, I received another email from Senator Alafonte, where a constituent is requesting a speed hub be installed along Halava Heights Road at KLW Luna Drive. I'm working with our traffic branch to assess the situation and we will report back at a future meeting. On November 13, I received an email from Teresa Repelli from Councilmember Cordero's office, where a constituent expressed his concern about Uluni Street on ramp onto the Moana River Freeway westbound. Currently, motorists on the right coming from Aia and Halava Heights Road must yield to motorists on the left coming from the Halava Industrial Park. The concerned citizen recommended four options. Move the yield sign to the left side so motors coming from Halava Industrial Park would have to yield. Keep the yield sign where it is and remove the median bushes so motorists on the right have more sight distance. Third, keep the yield sign where it is, but install a large convex mirror to assist the motorists on the right. And fourth option was to combine all three other options. I'm working with our traffic branch to assess the situation and we will report back at a future meeting. In the previous meeting, I mentioned that I received an email from Senator Alafonte about a damaged guardrail and delineator post at the Aia off-ramp. Our maintenance crew repaired the damaged guardrail and delineator post, but I noticed during my field inspection this morning, the new delineator post already got hit. We will monitor the situation and consider other alternatives, like installing more durable delineators. At the November's meeting, I mentioned that our district landscaping crew cut down the tree along Pono Holly Street, but still needed to cut the overgrown bushes and clear the pile of old cuttings. They completed the work and now residents can park their cars. And finally, during our previous meeting, I mentioned that the homeless encampment under the Halava Bridge near Pearl Harbor, we cleared the homeless encampment. But during my field trip this morning, a new homeless encampment has returned. Also noticed a new homeless encampment at Eliar Place across Aia Bowl and another encampment along Kamakamea Highway westbound before the Kaum Monastery intersection. I am working with our homeless coordinate to remove these new encampments as soon as possible. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
All right, board members, any questions for Mr. Abi? Mr. Abi, the state doesn't pay you enough. You, I appreciate all your reports and how thorough you are when it comes to them, so thank you so much. Community members, any questions for Mr. Abi? Oh, Francie, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I want to comment about the, the one on Ulune where it merges onto the freeway.
Yes.
There was some, in your recommendations, somebody had recommended switching the yield sign to the right.
Yes.
Or the, yeah, to the left, which I actually recommend leaving it for the right to yield because if if people in the left lane who are coming through the intersection get backed up, that's not good. Because that, that left side has a shorter distance or space for cars to get through that traffic light. Whereas the cars on the right turning lane, if you leave that for them to yield to the left lane, they can wrap all the way around down Kahua Paani Street if they have to. So that's my recommendation to leave it.
Has he, or something like that?
Yeah, just turn the bushes, make it a little lower.
Yeah.
Because I, I use that ramp after church sometimes to get, and yeah, the bushes, when they get a little high, it's, it's kind of, you have to watch as you're approaching the intersection before the turn to see if cars are coming through that traffic light or not. And if they are, then already just start yielding as you come around that turn. So that's, that's my recommendation.
Thank you for your recommendation.
Thank you, Francie. Any other questions, comments? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, Mr. Abi, for your report. Okay, moving on, Senator Wakai's office. Nothing heard? Nobody on? Okay, all right, Senator Alafonte?
Good evening, Board Chair Wood, Vice Chair Mizusawa, members of the board, members of the community and those online. Brandon Alafonte from the State Senate, you do have our written report, which is in front of you. And we have, also have that in your board documents for those online. First of all, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I want to also introduce my staff on the report. One of my staff members is here tonight. She's our session hire. Her name is Faith Kintua. So she'll be working with us this session. She worked last session in the State Senate, so we're happy to have her. My office manager, Jan Salcedo, and my other legislative committee clerk is Taylor Sales. And so they're our team for this year, and if you call our office, please reach out as we can see what we can do to help you. As it was mentioned by Councilmember Cordero, tomorrow's opening day, the legislative session starts, it's for 60 days. It starts, convenes at 10:00 AM. If you're in the area or wish to come, please drop by my office in room 217 to say hello. And then lastly, in the report, I just want to announce that I have some, a few committee assignment changes from my first two years in the Senate, so I still serve as Vice Chair of the Committee on Water and Land. I'm still a member of the Committee on Transportation, Culture and Arts. And my two new committee assignments is a member of the Ways and Means Committee and as Chair of the Public Safety and Military Affairs Committee. So we'll be very busy this session. We look forward to continuing to work with the board. And that concludes my report and happy to take questions. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Senator Paul?
Senator Alafonte, last year, there was $7 million allocated to Aia High School for a new football field and track. Any idea when that construction might commence?
Yeah, so it's coming soon. I can get you a more update on that. The governor's released money, funding, the Department of Education has encumbered that. They're going through a planning and design, and they're attempting to time it with the finish of the Title IX project with the women's athletic facility that's being built there, but they're doing their best to align that, but we can get you and the board a specific timeline on when that project will start. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, community members, any questions for Senator Alafonte? Okay, nothing here. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, have a good evening. Okay, moving on, Representative Ichiyama's office? Okay, moving on, Representative Shimizu?
Hello, board. My name is Carol Kapu. I'm the office manager for Representative Shimizu. Online also, we have Maria Vaughn. She's our, one of our session staffers. And we're glad to be reporting today for the first time, so your board is awesome. So Happy New Year. I put the information for our newsletter for this month and contact information in the chat. But for those of you who don't have access to that, if you go to www.repshimizu.com, you can access all of those things and you can sign up for the newsletter. We have a few things coming up. Everybody's mentioned it, that tomorrow is opening day. You're all welcome to come and visit our office in room 305. And Representative Shimizu is on three committees this year. He's on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs, Water and Land, and Public Safety. And then he's also a part of quite a few caucuses. Working Family Caucus, Filipino Caucus, Kupuna Caucus, Small Business Caucus, Keiki Caucus, Good Government Caucus, Environmental Legislative Caucus, and the Maritime Caucus. And other than that, just want to say we're very excited to be working with you. And if you have any questions or anything that you need me to take back for the representative, glad to do that.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you so much for your report.
Aloha.
Aloha. Representative Sam Kong. For his office. Okay, nothing heard. All right, moving on, community concerns from residents. Any community members? Sir, welcome back. I saw you walking today, by the way, like you were walking down from Aia Heights Road, right?
Aloha.
Aloha.
You folks all have a great year. Last time I got to sit here was a year ago. My concerns at that time, we were having problems of people turning left on our street. I live at 99-199 Kalavu Street. Right off Soul Lake, I live right in the corner, and you turn into Kalavu, Kalavu Street, that's my house in the corner. The problem that we have there is a concern, a real concern in the sense that there has, has been seven accidents at that intersection. Five of those cars that was outside, turning left. If you look at it, it's a green light. When you come in, it's gonna turn left. Also, the green light on the track is coming across. There's no sign that tells you to caution with turning left. All you see is this green light, and if you face towards Kalavu Street, you see another green light. But if you don't know the area and you're gonna visit somebody there, and you're gonna come down, you're gonna look at this green light, you're gonna think that I can turn anytime. The problem is you can't. There's people coming down like 30 miles an hour, and it's hitting these cars making those left turns. My grandson was one of them. And these cars, five of them ended up in my yard.
Actually broke your wall that one time, too, yeah?
If there is a concern to make signs that says you cannot turn, you turn on green with caution or you yield to the green. Simple sign, where you can go online for 60 bucks and pick it up in two days. Now, this has been a whole year. And the sign is not up yet. The problem is turning left into Kalavu from Soul Lake, coming from McDonald. The problem is the cars that's coming down, supposed to be 25 miles an hour, 30, 35, a danger. If not 40. The problem we have with that, we only have a 25 mile an hour sign at the stoplight. The next 25 miles an hour is by the housing, by the rail. In between, there's no sign to say how fast you need to travel. What you need is that most signs to come down and the sign that says slow down. A good sign would be good to have if you at the stoplight, it says slow down. Now, if you guys don't know the area, you're turning off cam on two of Soul Lake, that's the housing area there. You come on down, there's a crosswalk there. Right around the bend. So if you're gonna cross on that crosswalk, you need to pay attention. Because like I said, these cars, they come 25, 30, 35 miles an hour. Cause like I said, these cars, they come twenty five, thirty, thirty five miles an hour. You hit that crosswalk the wrong time, you will get hit. The problem is, they don't have a sign there that says crosswalk. All crosswalks, they don't have a light. It has a sign that says, the crosswalk, you, you are approaching the crosswalk, there's no sign there. What maybe we need to do is have that sign there, maybe have a high rise on that, on that crosswalk to slow down the traffic. But like I told you. The last time I seen you folks, or some of you, was one year ago. And there's. Yeah, my grandson got broadside over there, and the reason why he got broadside is the friend that brought him home, didn't know about the, our streets. All he saw was the green light, and he went, he got broadside with my grandson on the passenger side. But the concern is my family, I lived there, five times they hit my wall. Okay? There's no sign there for one whole year, none. I came over here one year ago, told you the same story. And I hopefully, I don't have to come back here another year. Now, we reached out to uh, Radiant, and she's, she's trying to get this thing going, but apparently. It seems like they, they need the money to do it. And I thought, well, I got sixty bucks and I can buy a sign for you and put it up myself, you know? But it's a dangerous situation, it's not one that wait a whole year and it's okay. It's not okay.
So if I remember, so if I remember correctly, I thought the, I thought the actual solution was to make it a left turn only at the time. Um, like, like, for example, like the bike would turn green and show a left arrow, then you would be able to make that turn, right?
That's, that's got a different story. If we can't get a sign up there, what do you think it will take, how long it's gonna take to get a light up there?
I know, I hear you, I hear you.
Like act of Congress, I think.
Alright.
But, yeah, you see that light on the left hand side, the green, that's the deceiving light. If you're coming down and you're making that left turn right there, you're looking at that green, it's telling you go. And the car's coming down, they're coming down with intentions to get to McDonald. Like I said, seven accidents right there.
Okay.
Yeah. Five into my wall.
You know, honesty just dropped off my radar, so um, I'll revisit it, especially since I make.
Step up on, on this thing. I know, you live in there, so, muscle, yeah? Yeah, friends come over, get on the area.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, here Curtis, what I'll do is I'll open up a ticket on that.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll get with Haku and we'll start just.
Yeah, try to get this thing rolling. And another thing is, uh, uh, I'd like to talk about it, would you put that uh, light back up there? That, that light you see over there, the green light, that crosswalk there, you had cut a tree down. About two years ago, there's a stump. Two and a half feet.
Okay.
And it's still there. The danger, it just has the lighting, the danger is people coming down on their bikes. If they're coming down at night, they're not gonna see that thing, and that's the danger on that thing too. Another thing is when you walk further up with that car, you see right there. There's, there's a mango tree that's growing over the, the crosswalk, and it's growing through the street right now. Go back up. Go back up, to the left. That tree, that passage tree, and it's gonna, a little flower, right there, that tree, that mango tree there, is now growing on. It needs to be cut back.
Well, that's on private property, but.
Yeah, it's on a private property.
So, what we'll, what we'll do, okay, I, I, I know how to handle this, so let me just take.
Yeah, 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 so it, it needs to be cut back, but uh. Uh, I don't know what this urgency means, uh, but I know that, because I do what I'm talking about.
So you know the, you know the wall that was falling down?
Yeah, they fixed it.
Right, well, that, they fixed it because we put in a ticket and. So, um, so we'll do the same thing.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the something right there.
Okay, got it.
So, I hope I have to come back one more year.
All right, I hope not either, so let me, let me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we appreciate it, so.
And just get that um, that crosswalk fixed, that's important.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, okay, any other concerns from the community? Okay, nothing heard, okay, all right, let's move on. All right, board reports, executive, I have nothing. Community relations, bloodlust, and publicity. That's Tracy, he's not here, so we're gonna skip that. Uh, Paul, Parks and Rec. And Chemo's not here for planning, Francie, anything on military and governmental affairs?
The next Pearl Harbor, Hawaii Rab meeting is not until April.
Okay, April what?
I forgot the date right now, so um. I'll get that next month.
All right, thank you, okay, uh, environmental and utilities, there you go. Okay, and education and culture, Annie?
Um, yeah, Vic made the announcement earlier, but Hokulea is coming into Puuloa, um, starting on Saturday, so I, I messaged out the board, the. Um, the link with the whole schedule, so there are different times where school groups can go, and then there's open public times where the public can go into our. Protocol will be on Saturday in the morning, and then it'll be an open public time after that. Um, and then January thirty first, we made the announcement last time, but there'll be the Makahiki Festival at Aia High School, um, on the football field. Um, and then every third Saturday, the Ho'ola Hoya Kalawaho Work Day.
Thank you.
Uh, announcements, uh, we'll move on to announcements. A board meeting will be scheduled for next uh, Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty five, it's seven PM here and online. From Lelo rebroadcast, will be uh, channel forty nine on the last Thursday, it's six PM. Archive meeting is in the link provided in the schedule. Uh, with that, if nobody has anything else, it's adjourned. Huh? Oh, yeah, yeah, so just to ensure that you guys registered for the election, please, if you're gonna run for this position again. Um, we, I just don't want to have a repeat of people not running.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we only have, right now, we have the one open at large, but there's a bunch of people that are, need to run for their current positions.
Yes, it's gonna, yeah.
We're not going back to that unless the board votes to.
No, no, we voted to go back, it was only temporary.
For that one position, yeah. No, no, just the one. Just the one. Curtis?
We keep our record. Although, but we did turn another seat at large, so.
We turned two.
For, for two separate times.
Right, because Jane and Chair Clark. Oh, or Chief Clark.
There's Chair.
Yes.
I believe there's a total of four sub-district seats that we moved to at large for the term.
Yeah, for the term, yeah.
Okay, just for the term.
Yeah, so there's only gonna be one at large.
Okay, sorry, Claire.
There's only one at-large seat.
Okay. Right, 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 okay, okay, we're good then, right, okay, perfect, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, with that, uh, meeting adjourned.